It is 6:30, and I will call the meeting to order. This is the Gold Beach City Council meeting, and we will start with the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we'll do roll call. We do have some...
Councilperson Madison, position one.
Park. Councilperson Bradley.
Chip Bradley, position two.
Councilperson Pagano.
Anthony Pagano, position three.
Councilperson McGilvery. There she is.
Yes, I was.
Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Perfect. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can now.
Perfect. Okay, Administrator Fritz.
Present.
Public Works Superintendent Nudal. He's present. All right, with that, we will get started. Unfortunately, our special recognition couldn't come tonight, so we will postpone that until next month. Consent calendar, did everybody have a chance to review that?
Yes.
Are there any questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I make the motion that the council adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm seconded by Councilperson Pagano. All right, I will call the question, and I will poll, starting with Councilperson Madison.
Aye.
Councilperson Brody.
Aye.
Councilperson Pagano.
Aye.
Councilperson McGilvery.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Is, can you hear me better now? Okay, I got a message that I was muffled. That's probably because I was mumbling.
Okay, I was trying to get the owl to look at you. He's finally looking at you now. There we go.
Hi Owl. Okay, we're learning technology here. All right, so the first thing on our next section is a copy of the city charter, council rules, and current city goals. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the city charter? It's always good to read that at least once a year. For those of you that don't know, that's kind of like the constitution of the city. That's what empowers us to do what we do. I noticed something that was interesting. Nobody else is mentioning anything, that a councilor, the position vacates if you commit a felony. You can be elected with a felony, but you have to be vacant if you commit one while you're in office. I thought that was interesting. I don't think that's in all of charters or even in the home rules. So, that was my interesting read from this year. Next up will be the council rules. We updated those not very long ago, so you may not have too many questions on that. Answer questions on the city council rules. Hearing none, we will move on to the city goals. Now, we did these last year. We reviewed them in detail. It took us several months. Is there anything that anybody would like to suggest changed? Anything you want to like say, hey, that needs to be our number one thing? Or do we have them written the way they should be? So we have, for those in the audience, if you don't have the packet in front of you, it's fiscal sustainability, enhanced quality of life, improve internal systems, a safe community, complete capital projects and identify future needs, influence economic growth, improve intergovernmental relations, update city planning, and address housing deficiencies. Okay, hearing no suggestions, we will move on to council committee members interns of office. So myself, and Councilperson Bradley, and the vacant position expire in December of 2024, and Councilpersons Madison, and Pagano, and McGilvery are up for election this year. So you want to start thinking about if you want to serve another term. We have until mid-August to file. You contact city front office if you would like to run for a city council position. We do have a vacant position, and Phoebe Skinner is visiting with us tonight. I visited with her yesterday. She's considering applying.
I don't know why the owl is not looking at you again.
It likes you better.
Except I'm not saying anything. I mean, I am now, but...
So we do have two open positions on the budget committee. If anybody could think of somebody that likes numbers. The budget committee is one of the funnest ones, I mean, if you don't mind numbers, because you usually only meet once or twice a year. And it's usually just once. So you do some reading, you meet once, Jody feeds us, and it's a happy day. Okay, next up, urban renewal. We do have several positions open if anybody wants to be on that advisory committee. Don't meet very often. And then we have a city flow chart. Any questions on that? And then the next question was, elect the mayor pro temp for the calendar year 2022. Councilperson Pagano served that position last year. Does anybody want to volunteer to do it this year?
I can do it again.
Would somebody like to make a motion to that?
I make the motion...
I make a motion that Councilperson Pagano carry on a year as mayor pro temp for calendar year 2022.
Second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint, or it says a lot, mayor pro temp for Councilperson Pagano. With that, I'll call the question. Councilperson Madison?
Aye.
Councilperson Bradley?
Aye.
Councilperson Pagano?
Aye.
Councilperson McGilvery?
Aye.
Four to zero. All right, then, meeting dates.
Do you want to try to see if, can you do your video without your audio? On yours?
Oh, just turn to audio, huh?
Yeah, just have, have it, just do your video, so that way it looks at you instead of...
Okay, Owl, will you look at me? Apparently not.
Yeah, so on your, your mayor Kaufman, can you turn on just your video?
You want me to turn my video on?
Yeah, so that way when you're talking, at least we can see you on the screen.
How's that? Okay.
Yeah, okay, better, yes, thank you. I don't know why it's not tracking your voice, but now at least we can see you.
It wouldn't have anything to do with the monitors in front of it, right? The sensors at the top of the owl?
Well, it's supposed to, it's supposed to follow the voice.
Right.
And you're the only one talking, so it should be following you.
Okay.
But it keeps wanting to look at the TV.
Okay, so tentative meeting dates for 2022. We typically meet the first Monday of the month, and in July and in September, that happens to be a holiday. Staff has never cared if we met on a holiday, but councilors like to like do camping and stuff like that, so would we like to make some suggestions now for replacement dates?
And I just highlighted those, that, those two blocks of time.
Usually we notice it like three weeks before it happens.
Yeah, but, so I went through the whole year, and those were the only two Monday holidays.
So, does anybody want to do July 5th instead of July 4th? It's a Tuesday.
I can do any day but the 4th.
Any day but the 4th, okay. Everybody okay with the 5th?
Good with 5th.
Okay.
Season's okay.
Does that work for the staff?
Yep.
Okay, September, do you want to do the same thing? Just go to the 6th from the 5th? It's a Tuesday?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was easy peasy.
And then as we get closer, if it looks like there may be a conflict, we can, we can deal with it then.
Cool, okay, so we will be meeting on Tuesdays for two, two months this year. Let's see how Tuesdays go. Okay, next up is citizen requested items, and I don't see anything in chat that anybody wanted to say anything. I'll give you another chance at the end. So the next item is the housing strategies implementation update.
And I'm going to let you go ahead and handle that, Mayor, since you were doing more stuff in December. I mean, it was kind of quiet, but...
Yeah, we made you take time off. We were mean. So, as a review, so we did a study a couple of years ago through Angelo, is that the right name?
Yes.
Planning, and we got a grant to have them complete that by implementing. So they're actually going to help with the meetings, and putting together agenda, and talking to stakeholders, and helping us actually do the writing, because our staff is kind of busy and can't fit it all in. So, one of the questions he had is who are the stakeholders? So it's people in the community that would understand what we need as far as development and planning. If they don't necessarily understand planning or zoning, that is not necessarily a challenge, as long as they can articulate what it is they need, what they see as a weakness, then, then our, our team can come up with, okay, this is what it says, this is what they want, can we do that? So do you have any suggestions? Do you want to do it tonight, like verbally brainstorm some names, or do you want to just email me some names, and we can invite them? Of course, I want Superintendent Nudal and our chief, please, on the committee, because they have a lot. But I was thinking of people like Dustin Watson, who just did a, a development here, the Patel's who are doing a development, maybe some real estate brokers. I see Mike Champlain posting a lot on Facebook about stuff like that. So those are the kind of the names I was thinking of. So if you can think of some people, would you either say it now, or send me an email or a text?
What about Chief White?
Good idea.
Thanks, I'm in. Sold.
Yeah, the twist is arm. So it's, it's going to be some reading, and we'll actually have joint meetings with the planning commission as we go through this. The goal was to be done by September, so we'll be asking for some special meetings, what your calendar is, and what the planning commission's calendar, and of course, the stakeholders. Timeframes and trying to get these meetings done and scheduled as, as quickly and efficiently as possible. And by meeting together, then we, we don't have to have as many public hearings. Otherwise, the planning commission would have to have a public hearing, and then we'd have to have a public hearing on the exact same thing. So, I call it a...
Mayor, do these people have to, do these people have to live within the city limits?
They do not. Is there any questions about that project?
It's still in the dark.
Did you hear that?
I think Councilperson McGilvery was saying that she's in the dark about it.
You're in the dark about it? Okay.
I...
Could you help me explain it?
It's before my time.
Well, I think when, when you came on board, that was probably one of the, the volumes of things that I had given to you. If not, I will make sure that I get it to you. It's just, and this is the super, this is a super short Reader's Digest version, but a couple of years back, the state planning agency, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, they paid for a consultant to help us update our, a portion of our comprehensive plan that dealt with housing, because it hadn't been updated in like 30 years. So, so basically, it, it, they did what's called a buildable land study, which shows, you know, how much, how much area is within what's called our urban growth boundary for future development. We're supposed to have each city in Oregon and county also. We're supposed to have planning for like 20 years of development, and, you know, and that's just a big, you know, spaghetti at the wall kind of thing, but, you know, how much land do we need for certain, for certain types of uses? And then, once they got done with that report, they had some recommendations for the city to implement. Well, we didn't have the staff or the money to implement those suggestions, so then the state came back late last year and gave us, along with a bunch of other small cities, a grant which basically funded the person. We didn't go out and fund them, they just hired the same people they hired last time to help us implement those strategies. So that's where we're at now. The mayor and I and our consultant Carolyn Johnson, who helped with the grant application together, are going to be meeting with the people from Angelo tomorrow on the phone to go over the scope of work, and then things are going to start, we'll, we'll be having meetings to talk about implementing those strategies and the thing. It had to do with like changing certain zoning designations, allowing for higher densities, that type of thing. But I will make sure that everybody has a copy, I know that everybody has a copy, but I will send a new copy to everybody so that it's like at the top of your pile.
Yeah, I know it's in that, one of those very large finders.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll, I'll make sure everybody's got a copy of it.
Okay, thank you.
If anybody wants to kind of meet one-on-one and go over it, I'm happy to volunteer to do that, or two-on-one or something like that, we can, we can do that. And I'll ask Matt if he can come up with a short explanation of what it is, so that it's easier for everybody to try to, because I can't describe it very easily, so that means nobody else probably can either. Unfortunately, I have a lot of experience with planning, but it still confuses the heck out of me. So, if that works for everybody, we'll, we'll do that. Let me know if you have any suggestions for people to include.
Thank you.
And Jody, I will keep you updated as we, we get updates. Is there anything else on that subject?
Not right now.
Okay, and then, so the next is the OHA Outstanding Performance Public Water System. Now, if I did my research correctly, this is like a really rare...
It's a super, it's a super duper feather in Superintendent Nudal's cap, and, and he's not only done it once, he's done it twice.
Wow.
So it's, it's an amazing thing. It helps a lot for our credibility with state agencies, but the biggest thing is, is it shows our citizens that we have one of the safest water systems in the state of Oregon. We are not Flint, Michigan.
No more boil water notices, remember those? That was a long time ago.
And Superintendent Nudal, he can, he can tell you a little bit more about like the, when the, the folks came down, what they looked for, that type of thing. That part I don't know so much about, so...
Why don't you tell, tell us about it a little bit?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pretty much what this is, is it's a, it's a look at the overall water system all the way from the intake through treatment, through all the water lines, to the reservoirs, and it takes into scope security fencing and cross-connection, just all the facets that are involved with water. And the state goes over that with a microscope, usually on the treatment side, to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything to meet the compliance requirements, as well as reporting, is obvious, because we report to them. But it's a pretty in-depth, you know, study, and I got double teamed this time, we had two inspectors down, so, so it's kind of, kind of fun, but we just covered everything, and then I just wanted to pass along my gratitude to the council and the budget committee for giving us the revenue to operate the system in fashion and meet these requirements, because it is a large financial undertaking to meet the security fencing requirements, and just the laboratory testing and everything else that's needed, so I just wanted to pass those kudos on to the city administration as well.
We appreciate all you do and all your team. It's amazing.
Yes, yeah, so the team was involved in this big time. This has been a, a five-year run. What we did is, they come up with suggestions on how to improve the system after they've done the inspection, and so I use those as a guide, guidebook for what I'm shooting for in the budget over the next five years before the next inspection. So the system just gets better and better and more compliant each year.
You've been the superintendent about 10, 11 years now, right?
Um, yep, 2009.
2009, okay. Good for you. Thank you. You are very appreciated.
And like I said in the staff report, that this is low-ball poker, so you want a low score, and we got a zero, so that's A+.
Awesome. Very awesome. Okay, and I'm going to give the citizens another chance if they want to speak.
I don't think we've had anyone else to...
I don't think anybody does, but if you do, this is the time to put something in the chat and say, hey, I want to say something. This is going to be a really long meeting, so...
Want to read those comments real quick, Mayor?
So it says, from Councilperson Pagano, awesome, awesome job, well and staff. And from Phoebe Skinner, congratulations Superintendent Nudal, thank you for all the work you do. All right, so with that, we will do counselor comments and updates, and we'll start with Councilperson Madison.
I have none, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy and safe...
Happy and safe?
I think it's probably New Year. Sorry, I must have cut off. Yes, a happy and safe New Year.
Thank you. Okay, Councilperson Bradley?
Small month, I have none.
Okay.
Not slow work-wise, but...
Councilperson Pagano?
Um, I don't have much. Wish everybody a happy and safe New Years, well. Thanks to Kuz Curry for getting everybody back online and powered up as quick as possible. That was a gnarly storm last night and this morning, so kudos to them, and also kudos to Superintendent Nudal and Administrator Fritz. Mayor Kaufman and I spoke with some representatives from Zipline Fiber last month, and they were very impressed with the city of Gold Beach and how easy it was to work with him. So, awesome job, both of you guys.
Councilperson McGilvery?
I just wanted to add my congratulations to Superintendent Nudal for his hard work, and that it so clearly paid off with that lovely low score. That's wonderful, congratulations. Also, to wish everybody, every one of us, a happy New Year, and a healthy New Year for us all.
Thank you. So I got an invite to speak with Donna Block, who is the field representative for Senator Merkley, and then she had a cancellation, so I got like an hour with her, just one-on-one. It was really cool. I was able to give her all of the projects that the city was working on, including the undergrounding of the utilities, and so that's on their radar, and they can help with all kinds of stuff when you have a relationship with that person. She hasn't been able to travel, because she started January of last year in the middle of the pandemic, and so they've had under travel rules, so she was able to sneak over here, and she was really glad to do that. So if anybody wants her information, I can give it to you, or give you an introduction. The other thing that she said they could do, and I was going to check with our administrator, is that if we're having problems still with the post office, they can do an inquiry, but we need to know exactly what the problem is, and, and describe it, and then send it to them.
I can give it to them in great detail.
Okay, so we will, if you're still having problems with the post office, and there's been a lot of complaints in the last couple of months, but if it's not solved yet, then they can do an inquiry, so...
Thank you for that.
I know that's been a frustration. I know that some people from the Portland office have been coming trying to help, but it's just whether or not it's working. So with that, I wanted to talk about, I really appreciate Councilperson Pagano. I've invited him to a, a couple of meetings, and he's done a really good job, and he remembers things better than I do, and I really appreciate him do, stepping up and doing that. The meeting with Zipline was really cool. They're planning on bringing fiber here by March, and what I didn't know, and they explained, they really knew our area really well, for somebody that doesn't live here, is that because they're a phone company, they have to share their line. If you're a cable company or other kind of company, you don't have to share your, your physical line. So once they put that fiber in, anybody else that wants to come in has to have the rights to use that line. So that means our cell towers can become 5G, because that's what they do, they connect to the fiber. So it's actually going to be an interesting project, and we were able to explain a couple of things that they didn't know, so we might be able to get more service than what they're originally offering. So it's, it's going to be a good project, and when they're done, it'll probably be more tax revenue.
Yes, good.
So, mostly for, for the schools, because they have the highest tax rate, but compared to everybody else, but that's not bad for anybody. So that was kind of cool. Unfortunately, it's, it's not exactly when we wanted to do the undergrounding, but it'll just be part of the undergrounding once that happens.
Okay, now when you say "we," please don't say "we."
I said "the." The undergrounding, didn't I say?
Yeah, that's not a city project. I just don't want people to get confused that that's our project. We are supporting that project, but it is not our project.
So, then I did some research on the of the months, and one of the ones that came to mind was the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Preventing Month. You know, we forget that the 101 corridor is actually used by human traffickers a lot, partly because it, we don't have as much OSP, and, and people, the law enforcement's not as heavy as it is on I-5. Not that we won't get them if it can, but it, it is a, a well-traveled thing, and children should be watched and careful, be careful. One of the things that surprises me is, is there's been a national or statewide pretty much emergency on cannabis, illegal grows, but nobody seems to talk about the slavery that goes under it. And so I'm going to mention that, that a lot of these grows are slaves running them. It's, it's the cartels, they, they steal people, they bring them up here, and they make them run it, and that's not fair. It's not right, that's not what we stand for, so, you know, not only is the illegal cannabis...
There wasn't a standard, I-5 was the corridor, but now it's 101.
Right. So it is a serious issue, and be aware, and I put in some phone numbers, if you know anybody that's, need help. National Mentoring Month, you know, it doesn't have to be an official mentoring program, just help somebody out, pay it forward. Most of us have had somebody in our life that's mentored us, whether officially or unofficially, and it's good to do that, and pay it forward. Find a mentor and be a mentor. Martin Luther King Day represents civil rights movement and how it's evolved today. One of the things that I've learned is that we otherize people, and when we do that, it's really easy to talk about them, and they're different, and they're less than, and when we remember that people are human, and we're all human, it's our human experience, and we all deserve to be treated with decency, regardless of what flavor or color, or what we think or believe, or we're all humans. So, wanted to remind that, and I know our administrator's going to love this one. International Hug Day?
Jody's not a hugger.
I kind of have some fun in this, right? So we're in a pandemic, so it's not real popular to hug strangers, but the term I believe is called oxytocin, when you hug a, a person or even a pet. It, it emits a chemical that gives you positive stuff in your brain. And then when I was researching this, the United Kingdom has Dry January, which means don't drink alcohol, and then later they had Brew Monday. And of course, being from Oregon, Brew Monday means microboob to me. Well, they meant tea, and it was to be with 16 to 24-year-olds that are lonely, and... And of course, my favorite for the UK was its Winnie the Pooh Day on the eighteenth. And it's a celebration of when the author was born. And Winnie the Pooh was one of my favorite cartoons. And if anybody has any proclamations that you'd like to make, drop them off City Hall, or email them to me. Happy to do that. People are much better writers than I am. And with that, Administrator, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, not at this time. Well, you know, now that the holidays are over, we're back in the swing of things.
So the first meeting of the month was thirty minutes. May I have a motion to adjourn? First meeting of the year.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
No second.
Alright, I will call the question. Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Counselor Bradley?
Aye.
Counselor Pagano?
Aye.
Counselor McGilvery?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Okay, so...
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.